Good evening, everybody. This is the regularly scheduled meeting of the South Haven City Council. It is Monday, June the 7th, 2021. I'd like to call this meeting to order. It's not on there, but if we could first stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And now we'll have the roll call, please.
Jeff Arnold.
Here.
Chris Campbell.
Here.
Joe Reeser.
Here.
Steve Schlock.
Here.
George Sleeper.
Here.
Letitia Wilkins. And Scott Smith.
Here. I'd like to make a motion to excuse Letitia Wilkins.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to excuse Letitia Wilkins. All those in favor say aye.
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 Pose no. She is excused. Next, we have the approval of the agenda, and I will, we will need to remove item number six, which is our update from Van Buren County Commissioner Gail Patterson Gladney, because she couldn't make it.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda with the removal of number six.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the agenda. Any discussion? See it done. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose no. That is approved. So now, we get to have some fun. We have actually a tribute. When Mr. Brian Desette, our former city manager, left us, we had a little pandemic in the midst, so we were not in person. We were home via Zoom. He didn't want to come to my house and do this on the computer, so he very wisely chose to come back and do this in person, so we could have a few guests come. So what we're going to do, I think really, this is a chance, I know I have some community members who would also like to recognize Brian. I will chime in. I've got Beth Griffin, who's got a proclamation. So, I think I'll start with Beth. Do you want to come up first? And then we'll, let's start with this. Let's get Brian up here, and then we'll, we'll let our esteemed residents, citizens, come on up, and let's, let's share some stories about Brian for a minute.
Awesome.
It'll go quick, I promise. And then after that, you're all free to go.
Awesome. All right, great. Thank you for the invitation, and I do, I do think it's a good thing that we didn't do this via Zoom, because you are very appreciated, and I know it may be a little uncomfortable for you, but just, just relax and enjoy it, because you've really earned, you've earned this, and we're happy to be able to be here in person for you, so. All right, so, what we did was, we worked with, we worked with some friends to help put together some things that together make up the highlights of your, of your tenure at the council, so I'm just going to go ahead and read it, because I want everyone to hear. Okay? So, "In the state of Michigan, it's a special tribute to Brian Desette. Let it be known that it is with deep appreciation for his diligent and dedicated work, commitment to the community, and concern for the public good that we recognize Brian Desette for his nearly eighteen years of distinguished public service with the city of South Haven. Brian Desette began his career with the city by working during summers of 1994 through 1997 as a seasonal dockhand, and returned to employment with the city of South Haven in 2006 as its assistant city manager. As an assistant, Brian Desette was responsible for the oversight of the Department of Public Works. And in November of 2008, Brian was selected to serve at the will of the mayor and city council for South Haven as city manager. As city manager, Brian Desette was responsible for effective management and administration of all affairs of the city. Under his leadership, South Haven obtained over ten million dollars in grant funding for numerous projects to make South Haven a better place to live, work, and vacation, including the reconstructions of Center Street, Williams Street, and Phoenix Street, and the South Beach and North Beach projects. Brian was always willing to place his concern for the public good ahead of his personal interests and earned admiration and respect from other civic leaders throughout southwest Michigan. Individuals throughout the region seek his advice." As did I when I first came in. Thank you. "And we relied on his input because of his steady wisdom and unwavering ethics. Brian has always demonstrated a deep and genuine love for the city of South Haven and the surrounding area. And that's what makes you a fabulous leader." That part was mine. Moreover, Brian Desette let the success of others define his career in South Haven instead of seeking personal and professional accolades, which is one of the many reasons why his selfless leadership deserves to be celebrated by this recognition. In special tribute, therefore, this document is signed to recognize Brian Desette, his distinguished career with the city of South Haven and his positive impact on southwest Michigan. Along with the city of South Haven, we express our deepest gratitude to you, Brian, for your unwavering commitment to public service, and we extend to you our sincerest wishes for continued success and happiness. And I want to know what comes next, but that's just me. And it's signed by myself, your state representative, by Senator Eric Nesbit, by Congressman Fred Upton, by Lieutenant Governor Garland Gilchrist, and by Governor Gretchen Whitmer.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Well, thank you. Thank you all very, very much. So, in our house, Calvin's back there. Everybody.
Get you in a photo later.
So, in our house, we have a proclamation that was issued by the state of Kentucky for my grandfather on his hundredth birthday. And it was something that I worked a year on, and it was a really big deal to give that to him. And we've hung that proudly since, since Peppa passed away in one of the rooms of our house. So, we officially have something to put next to that, so thank you very, very much.
You are very, very.
I won't keep going, but I do want to thank all of you. Working for the city where I grew up, where I continue to live, was an absolute dream. It was wonderful. I enjoyed almost every day of it. And with complete sincerity, the thing that was just wonderful about it was the great team that I had, working with the council, working with the staff, and I am thrilled that you have these folks here working with you, because I've spent quite a bit of time with Kate and Griffin, and I think you are in better hands than I could ever offer. So, good luck to all of you, and thank you very, very much.
And don't go too far, because you're good. I'll just offer, any others out there would like to say anything? Would you like to jump up and make any comments about Mr. Desette?
Oh, my name is your grid life, will you?
What about Bert?
Is your last, would you like to ask her a question, if she's got her grid life t-shirt or anything?
So, if you all don't know, so I served on a board with this wonderful supervisor for a number of years, and my gift, Nancy, how many motions did I offer?
Oh, my God, I didn't count.
Yeah, so.
Ryan offered all the motions, but somebody else.
And I'm not able to get a motion in. I just let you know. I was able to get one in for the first time.
Having taken minutes for twenty years, I know. It's really great if, if there's like a common theme, so that was my gift to Shay's, so Nancy, you're welcome.
I love it. Well, no one else wants to come up? Well, I would just say again, I mean, you were masterful at communication. For a lot of us that just get, got used to, we had a question, I don't know how you were able to text, email, and keep us all moving at the exact same time, but I feel like you were, we were all in the right places. I don't know if you others felt like that, but I was amazed at your ability to communicate. And I'm, you know, I miss having you here. I'm thrilled of your new job. I did actually, we have a, another sign, you're, you're still ride that bike, right?
Oh, yeah.
So, I had, we had a special sign made up, because I believe there was an incident with a sign when you went for a trip one time, so I just, we have this special. Could have this, so. I will, I'll hang right by your proclamation.
I've got to preserve this moment.
You should get up here with your. Oh, oh, yes. So, so the background on this is, at Crystal Mountain, last summer, no, two summers ago, I had gotten up early to go mountain biking, and like a bit of a moron, I was looking to my right instead of forward, and I ran into a stop sign. And it really hurt. So, I hit the stop sign, fell down really hard, and jumped up to make sure no one saw it. But, yeah, I've shared that story with a few people. So, this is wonderful. Thank you.
You got it.
Thank you all.
Thank you. And I'll be really nice, because it's a beautiful Monday night. Whoever wants to sneak out with Mr. Desette, you're welcome to sneak out that door. So, I know there's some that came for that, very. Sneak out. Oh, there's Bert. Thanks, everybody, for coming. See ya. I love that story. I never heard it.
Should have never told you, I guess.
That's a good, that's a good story. All right, we now have a senior services update by Ms. Annie Brown. Good evening, Annie. Come on up.
Thank you for your time. I'm Annie Brown. I live on Michigan Avenue. I'm a city resident, and I'm also on the board of Van Buren County Senior Services, so I'm here once in a while to update you and let you know what we're doing. Van Buren County Senior Services has been very busy during the last fifteen months of COVID-19. We held numerous vaccine clinics that were usually booked up as soon as they were announced. More than one thousand Van Buren County seniors were vaccinated in about two months through Van Buren County Senior Services and the Van Buren County Department of Health. When seniors were quarantined behind closed doors, we delivered meals to seniors in their homes. We operated Care Watch to check up on seniors through phone calls and visits, and make sure that they had what they needed, and also, we reached out in case our seniors were dealing with depression or other aspects of mental health. We wanted to make sure they didn't feel too lonely, and that they had someone calling them and checking up on them. Our new South Haven Senior Center is moving right along, and we hope to be open in November. Moore Family Pharmacy is going to remain there, and we love being their neighbor, so we're glad that they will be remaining there next door to us. We've had a couple meetings about when we'll, we will be back open for countywide activities. We're still being very cautious because of COVID. Our staff will be back to work in July at our Paw Paw office, and limited events across the county will begin in August. Due to our construction project, we will be holding only special events in South Haven until the new center opens. Do you have any questions?
Can you just give us a little sneak peek of what we should expect at the new senior center?
Oh, first of all, we're currently located at the, at part of the First Baptist Church, so that's the city on 76, if you haven't been there. So, first of all, the new place is huge. So, there's lots of room for office space, and activities, and pickleball, and more space for people to spread out and do activities, and play cards, and moving out to do more physical fitness projects. So, and it's going to be very bright and new, and we love the location at the old village market, so we're excited.
Excited to see it open up, so very good.
And if you haven't had a tour yet, you can have tours now, if you call the senior center, because we would love to show you around if you haven't been out there yet.
Very good. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks for the update, and good luck with your project.
Thank you.
All right. Next, that takes us to the consent agenda, items A through E.
I'd like a motion, I make a motion to approve the consent agenda, items A through E.
I'll second it.
We have a motion, we have a second. Is there any discussion on the consent agenda?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I have a question more than anything. What I'm wondering, as far as, you know, we usually approve meeting minutes and that through the consent agendas, and what I'm wondering is, I understand that we're just in receipt of the meeting minutes. We're not doing anything other than taking receipt of it. So, my question is, if a person feels that they were misquoted in a, in a, in the minutes of a meeting, and six months or a year later, they watch a video and say, "That isn't what I said," and they were misquoted, what is the procedure for that citizen or the person talking at the meeting to be able to correct the record if it needs correcting?
To be ready.
Sure. Megan, as the clerk?
Yeah, absolutely. So, the citizen would have to reach out to the staff liaison of whichever applicable board or commission that they are looking to amend the approved minutes of, and they'll work with the staff liaison. They are able to be amended with a majority vote in favor of the amendment. And just as a friendly reminder, the minutes are not a direct quote, that's not meant to be a transcript exactly of the meeting, it's more so just the, the permanent record of that meeting, so.
So, basically, they could go back to the next meeting and, and mention that, or contact the chairman of the board, or whatever the case may be.
Yep, it would be an agenda item that it would be approved and voted on, or voted on and approved.
Thank you very much. That's all I had. Thank you.
We have a motion, we have a second, and this is a roll call, please.
Arnold.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Reeser.
Yes.
Schlock.
Yes.
Sleeper.
Yes.
Wilkins. I'm sorry, Smith.
Yes. That takes us to old business, and if the group is in agreement, our first item is relative to the budget. I would like to read through the items, and then we'll just tackle them, and we can approve as a group. First, we have Resolution 2021-13, which is a resolution adopting the 2021-2022 fiscal year budget for component unit funds of the city of South Haven. Next, we have Resolution 2021-14, which is a resolution adopting the 2021-2022 fiscal year budget for general, special revenue, debt service, capital projects, and fiduciary funds of the city of South Haven, Michigan. Next, Resolution 2021-15, which is a resolution adopting the 2021-22 fiscal year budget for enterprise and internal service funds of the city of South Haven. And finally, Resolution 2021-16, which is a resolution setting the 2021 property tax millage.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion for the adoption of 2021-13, 14, 15, and 16, as read.
I'll second.
Very good. We have a motion, we have a second, and Kate, let's roll through them. I know Michelle's back there, so.
We do have Michelle, if we have more questions, but again, this is the four resolutions that we adopt each year, to adopt the fiscal year budget for one year for the city charter, per the city charter for the city budget, and these break down into individual component funds, and the individual funds, if they're enterprise versus special, special funds, general funds, and whatnot. So, we've kind of broken these out for you. These are the same things that you see every year. If there's any questions, and unto any particular resolution, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any council questions? No council questions? Was there, are there any public comments? These are some big items, so any public questions at this time? Hall's quiet. All right. I guess I just want, again, folks to be aware that, you know, budgets is something, you know, something that we set based on priorities. Every year, we look at priorities, and those priorities, you know, sit out there for people to look at, so we always encourage the public to, you know, be in contact with us. You know, that ultimately guides policy, which guides, you know, how we spend money. A lot of this is, you know, we see street improvement, you see a lot of different, you know, funds in here, so it's just important to be in contact with us, if you've got questions, so. If there's nothing else, we've got a motion, we've got a second to approve the items as listed. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose no. We are approved. Very good. Thank you, everybody. That takes us to new business. The city of South, or city council will be asked to consider the approval of special event 2021-15, Juneteenth Celebration, to be held on June the 19th, 2021, from 3:00 PM until 10:00 PM in Elkenberg Park.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2021-14.
I'll second. It's 15, isn't it?
I believe it's 15.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'll amend my motion to approve Resolution 2021-15.
I'll second that one.
Oh.
That can't be right. That was in the other, that was in the budget resolutions.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
We need a new event number.
Ah, 14, 15, 16.
I'm sorry, 2021-15 is not the same, I think that's what we had in there.
That's the budget.
It's a special event, not.
It's a budget enterprise fund that we've already voted on.
Yeah, but a special event application is different than a resolution.
Yeah, it's not a resolution.
Good.
So, I make a motion to approve special event 2021-15.
I'll second.
Perfect. All right, we have a motion, we have a second. Kate?
Yes, sir. This is a, a special event for the Juneteenth Celebration to occur on June 19th, Saturday, June 19th, from 3:00 PM to 10:00 PM in Elkenberg Park. And my apologies, we put an extra E in that Elkenberg on your agenda, so that should not be there. They would have double dutch, they would have a bounce house. We also, we ultimately, with the, with the, there she is, Ms. Crowley, the organizer kind of tailored this after some recent changes came down from the governor's office, so she was going to be a lot more restrictive with the, the crowd, but since things have sort of lifted up, she's now only looking to have, I think it's just Humphrey Street barricaded off, having some of the, I think, fire apparatus and possibly a police car there to kind of get the kids over there to look at them. And for more information, I'll invite Ms. Crowley to come on up and, and kind of talk more about her event.
Come on up. Welcome. Good evening. Thanks for coming. Thanks for organizing.
Thank you. Yeah, Kate did a great job, of course, giving you guys, you know, the basics of the event. I'm also the one that organized the Black Lives Matter march that we had here last year, so it's, I don't want to say the same, but it's kind of, you know, just a spinoff or whatever, an extension of what we did last year, just trying to keep the momentum going and things of that nature. So, the Juneteenth Celebration, I hope everybody is familiar with what Juneteenth is and why it's important, and its pertinence, and things like that. If not, I'd be happy to tell you, but.
Do, share. I do it.
Well, African American Independence Day is June 19th, 1865. The reason that that day is pertinent is because Abraham Lincoln actually signed the Emancipation Proclamation in 1863. However, African Americans were still enslaved for an additional two years, because slave masters did not, of course, release their slaves. They, they held on to them. So, it wasn't until soldiers actually went down south and personally told these African Americans that didn't have access to newspapers, or they had no idea that they had been free for two years. So, of course, June 19th, 1865 is a very pertinent day in African American history, and we want to celebrate that.
Thank you. I think it's good to share that. Not everybody knows, so it's good to know.
Thank you for asking.
Absolutely.
If you guys have any questions about the event, I've been working really, really hard for like two or three months personally with Kate, with Natalie, Chief Natalie Thompson. We've had the fire chief and stuff involved, just to make sure everything's safe and everything's good. So, I think we've dotted all our i's, crossed all our t's, just to ensure that it's a nice, peaceful, community, family-friendly event.
Any questions?
Yeah. Forty-two, too old for the bounce house, or? Checking for a friend.
Maybe just a little bit, but please bring the kids. Like, everybody is invited, just like everybody was invited to the march, and that's what makes an event so great, is when we can all collaborate and show the unity within our community. So, please, we'd love to have you there. I don't know if you've already been invited by anyone or anything, but I.
I'll go.
Please, let's take this as a personal application, or a personal.
I wish I was forty-two.
Extension of an invitation. I would love to see all of you all there with your kids, grandkids, nieces, cousins. I mean, we've got the bounce house, we've got black-owned business vendors that are going to be set up, just to try to network and, you know, get their businesses into the community a little bit more. So, I put a lot of thought into this, and it would be great if everybody could show up just to support.
If he goes in the bounce house, I'll go in.
If it deflates, it's not on me. No. The kids get mad at you.
Kids. All right. Any other questions of this group?
Just one clarification. I know the application does say to have fireworks, that's been removed to another item, but there will be no fireworks. It's, it's, everything is going to be in the park from 3:00 PM to 10:00 PM. Basketball, volleyball, vendors, as you mentioned, just a lot of things in the park for that, for that special event.
Yep. Okay. No, it's perfect. I'll have you maybe step aside for a second. Any public questions or comments as she stands up there? Everyone's quiet. I think we're good to vote on this one, so thank you for this part. You got it. All right. We've got a motion, we've got a second to approve special event 2021-15, Juneteenth Celebration. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose no. It is approved. And again, thank you for your work to put that together. So, the next item is related. The city council will be asked to consider an application for a display of consumer-grade fireworks at 320 Fruit Street for the Juneteenth Holiday on June the 19th, 2021, from 10:00 PM until 10:15 PM. And on this one, if we don't have a motion yet, we may have to have some discussion off, if the group is willing.
I'll make a motion, and I'll try to do a better job this time. I'll make a motion to approve allowing a display of consumer-grade fireworks at 320 Fruit Street for the Juneteenth Holiday, June 19th, 2021, from 10:00 PM to 10:15 PM.
I'll second.
Very good. We have a motion, we have a second. Kate, I know we've got, there's some discussion to be had about this. Kate's got it, there's, did we talk about the liability, the park, not the park? Let's.
Yes. So, this is a request to, so it's an application through LARA to apply for a, a fireworks display that's outside of the bounds of when we normally would have, in which are federally recognized holidays, and I think it's the day before, the day of, and the day after. Here, Ms. Crowley is asking to shoot it off on a day that is not necessarily federally recognized, but under LARA and under our ordinance, and we checked with the city attorney, she can, she can fill out this form, it can come to city council, and should the council approve this, then this would be, it would be, it would allow for this display, and it would be a waiver of the noise ordinance for this period of time that she's requesting.
Can we talk a little bit about the issue of, I mean, this sits in like residential right next home-to-home versus a park? So, initially, we were going to do it, I mean, a park would be, I know we've got our fire chief here, we could talk about those concerns.
Right. When, when we initially had the first request, it was to be an adjacent property nearby the park, but we also looked at what the buffer zones were, we had to look at overhead lines, we also looked at liability insurance. Some of those components weren't able to be fleshed out, so Ms. Crowley had the idea of just having this application for her personal property. If you, I think I did put in the application, I'm sorry, in with the application, the buffer map, as well as, I know Bill Hunter has looked at the overhead lines, so if those are questions that council would like, I could have both Chief Hens and Public Works Director Hunter come up and ask, and be available for questions.
I think that'd be fair. I guess I'm, I'm more concerned about just proximity of homes, and obviously, we're also talking about a precedent.
There are, yes, there is a precedent question. Ms. Crowley. Um, Ms. Crowley was able to bring the, the fireworks in question to Chief Hens, so they had an opportunity to look at them, and if, if Chief Hens wants to come up and kind of talk to the council about what they looked at and buffer zone.
While we have him here, maybe he could define consumer grade as well.
Yeah, the, these are, these are consumer-grade fireworks. They're inch-and-a-half diameter, 1.4 gram, and they're legal in Michigan when they passed the laws a few years ago now, and, uh...
They're legal? They're legal, not illegal, right?
Yes, legal. I'm sorry. Yes, I'm sorry. Yes, Ms. Crowley dropped some off the station, they're, they're consumer-grade, and, uh, we had a discussion, we weren't sure if they were five-inch or five-inch, but they're perfectly, I mean, Jake's Fireworks sells them every year, and, uh, NFPA does require a 210-foot horizontal buffer zone, and for this size, 100 to 105-foot vertical. So, and I know we, we talked earlier, um, we'd had discussion as far as holding them in the manual parking lot there, and aside from any electrical lines that I, Public Works Director Hunter stated he didn't think there'd be any issues with those over there, I'd, I'd rather it be in a little bit wider area, but my main concern was the, uh, we were in a severe drought. They're talking some pretty sizable rains this week, so I think that'll be not as much of a concern going forward, but, um, but yeah, I think, and like I said, they, these are, these are consumer-grade, they're legal, um, they're able to be lit off, you know, and I think we're just looking to see a, I think mostly just given my opinions as far as buffer zones and, and, um, the, like I said, I'm hoping this next week, if we get this rain that they're talking, I don't think vegetation will be an issue, but up until today, it was, so.
I'm getting any questions?
Yeah. The houses, the houses surrounding the area, have we asked about if everyone feels comfortable with that? And if, um, we don't get the rain, can we look at maybe calling this off if it stays dry? That's, I guess, two things I can think of, because would you have the power, I guess, to say, hey, maybe we need to, to back this off?
No, we wouldn't, uh, we can, DNR ultimately has the say-so.
Okay.
Uh, in burn bans, and then, uh, and then we can't even provide enforcement for that, for that matter, but, uh, it's all kind of in the hands of the DNR. And up until yesterday, I think there was only two counties in the state that had an actual burn ban, uh, so they, they really hold out on those, I don't know why, but, uh, but yeah.
Anybody else?
I'm just worried about the buffer zone with, with things landing on rooftops and, and things, so that's, that's my biggest concern now, and the precedents that it sets, so.
I assume they, they have that buffer zone because of, you know, the debris coming, you know, and we've all lit them at home before, and you get a little, little coming down on you with, with this size, and they're, they're, they're a good size, they'll have a pretty good crack, so, but they'll put on a good show, too.
Right. And so...
I had one, too.
Go, go ahead.
And I, just to follow up on, on Steve's question, Chief, that, but you, I'm worried about the houses, and Chris mentioned that, too, but you don't seem too worried, so your comfort is making me feel better about it.
I, the debris, a lot of it, after it's, I've got a 16-year-old that loves fireworks and lights them all the time. Uh, we live out of town, thankfully, but, um, otherwise, you guys may be having some complaints, but I, I, I see enough of them, a lot of it burns up, unless you get a low, one that pops a little bit lower, and I think that's probably their concerns, having that 200-foot horizontal and, and 105-foot vertical buffer zones.
So it's maybe more dangerous to people than it is to property?
I'd say so, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, mostly just to keep, and I, at one point, when, in our original plans, we were talking about there would be enough of a buffer zone if they were lit in the parking lot, uh, anybody that was going to be spectating in Elkenberg Park were going to be past that point, and especially if we had the, the roads barricaded off, so.
Okay. Gotcha. We could station a vehicle possibly if needed.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I guess, why not the park?
Um, we were not able to get the, um, first off, we, we need to have, um, liability insurance that, that's required for any, any, um, any special event, we need to have liability insurance, and especially when we're having fireworks, we have, um, infrastructure out there, and any damage out there, we would like to make sure that we're covered for any fixes for that, and we could not get that sorted out.
Because for me personally, I like it in the park, with, with liability insurance.
Unfortunately...
I mean, with, if we can get the insurance, yeah, that, I'm there. I, I'm concerned if we approve this in a residential neighborhood, going forward, we're saying this is a good spot for it, and while it might be dry one year, wet one year, it's, that for me is irrelevant. Is this the right place, yes or no? So I'm concerned this is not the right place in a residential neighborhood with a home sandwiched on either side, all the way around. That's, I, I'm all for the fireworks, I'm all for the celebration, good job, I'm just, I don't like that spot, that's all. You are more than welcome to, come on up.
These are actually the same fireworks that we shoot off every single year, so we're not really, and I don't want to say we're not asking for approval, we're definitely asking for approval, but we're not really wanting you guys to consider too much the safety part of it, we're really asking for the advancement of the date, kind of thing, because on the Fourth of July, we could shoot these same fireworks in my front yard, with no approval needed, no city council vote, no nothing, you know what I mean? We're just asking, could we please do it on June 19th? I agree, I would have loved to do it in the park, there is no liability insurance for consumer-grade fireworks. That would be like you getting, uh, insurance to light fireworks for your kids on the Fourth of July in your driveway. It doesn't exist, I looked for it, because I wanted it in the park, too. The only insurance that exists for fireworks shows are real pyrotechnics shows, kind of what you guys do on the beach. Insurance is 10 grand. We don't need that for, we're setting off $100 worth of firecrackers, you know what I mean? Like, it's kind of different, um, and again, these are the same fireworks you can buy at Walmart, you can buy it at the tent that they set up in the parking lot, Jake's Fireworks, they're going to be popping all over these same houses on the Fourth of July, the same fireworks, the same fireworks are. Um, so the only reason we moved it from the park to 320 Fruit Street is because that's my personal residence, and I don't need that $10,000 worth of insurance that we don't need, because they're consumer-grade fireworks, not commercial fireworks. Does that make sense?
It does, yes. So I guess maybe that's another question for this group.
And while you're here, Chris asked the question, and I, and I saw you nodded, but now that you're at the microphone, and you spoke to the neighbors within the blast zone.
Absolutely, absolutely. Everybody's actually coming to the event. You know what I mean? Like, everybody's excited about it, everybody knows about it.
Fully aware, and...
And it's only going to be like a 10 or 15-minute show. Like, it's not like we're just going to make up noise for hours or anything like that. Literally, we're going to set off, you know, the fireworks and it's done. It's done, it's kind of like the grand finale, um, and that's why we're doing it from 10 to 10:15, because the event ends at 10, so that, it's over. Technically, the event is over, and I could just go home, shoot them off at my house, they're still visible, you know what I mean? Because I had just happened to live in close proximity to Elkenberg Park. So it just, I was trying to get creative with, you know, the insurance thing and all of that, so I did the best I could, again, to dot my I's and cross my T's, and this was really the only option. It really was. And again, these are the same fireworks that on the Fourth of July, I wouldn't even have to ask you guys to shoot off right in front of my house, over the same houses that we're asking to do them on, on the 19th.
Yeah, I understand.
As far as the drought thing is concerned, um, I know he said that he couldn't personally call it off, it'd be all under the DNR, this, that, and the other. I would not put anybody's home or person at risk if they even approved it, and then I found out, oh, it's a drought, the grass is burning, I wouldn't do it. Like, I personally would call it off, myself, like, I'm, I would just, I just would, you know, the DNR wouldn't have to. If it's not safe, it's not safe. That's why I'm consulting with Kate and Chief Thompson and the fire chief, and we're making sure that it's safe first and foremost.
Yeah. Got it. And like I said, I'm just a bigger fan of the park.
Mr. Mayor? I, I do have a question that I just thought of. Um, you, you state that these are the same fireworks that everybody's going to be doing on a certain date, and I agree with you 100%. What I, what I'm having a hard time with is on your application, it's, it's your homeowner's insurance. The biggest difference for me is the city's liability. Number one, on the Fourth of July, or the date set in the ordinances and everything else, everybody is covered by their homeowner's insurance. On a special date approved by the city of South Haven, that makes us a partner in it, in my opinion.
It does, it's a...
And we, and we may need a legal opinion on that, but when we approve an event and approve the insurance certificate that she has here, I think the city's sticking, sticking out too far as far as liability, and at this point, without a legal opinion from the attorney, I would have to vote no for the special event, and I'm sorry for the fireworks, but I would...
We did get approval from the attorney, he's the one that actually suggested that we filed the LARA application to make it legal, and being that we're doing it after 10 o'clock, it's no longer associated with the event. The special event application is only from the hours of 3:00 PM to 10:00 PM. At 10:00 PM, the city's risk is gone, the city's liability is over, and there is a million-dollar insurance policy for the hours of 3:00 to 10:00.
Kate, I see no legal opinion in the...
It's not, I mean, he, he talked about, you know, the different, and how to apply and how, how this would be, how to apply and how this would be available to apply under the ordinance under the state. It really wasn't, um, it really didn't speak to anything about liability with the city commenting on this at her personal residence. I didn't get that from him on that.
How could the city be liable for me personally shooting off fireworks? If that was the case, like, you guys would be liable for everybody that shoots them on Independence Day. Like, I mean, that's why I'm doing it at my personal house, you know what I mean? Because it's my property.
Because this is a special event that you're asking us to approve.
The event's not at my house, though. The event's not at my house. The event's at Elkenberg Park, so this is like a whole separate agenda item. It's separate, I happen to be the same person asking for both, but it's totally separate, and that's why we...
So the fireworks aren't going off at your house?
They are going off at my house, they're not going off at the event.
And this is a separate event, starting at 10:00 PM, correct?
It's not even an event, it's just me and my family shooting off our own fireworks as our celebration for our Independence Day.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, you can have a seat. And just to be clear, there is no, we don't really have a legal way to get into that part because of our own city liability, just to make sure I'm totally clear.
Yeah, our own city liability requires certain coverage, especially when, when we do have fireworks and pyrotechnics. Ms. Crowley was, was able to actually share her policy with us, and there was an actual exclusion, and they actually accepted, it said that there will be no bodily damage, no bodily injury, no property damage covered by any pyrotechnics or fireworks, and that's where it was kind of clear-cut for us, that there couldn't be any fireworks in the park. So Ms. Crowley, uh, was thinking that she would do this at her house, at her private residence, um, separate from the event, after the event, and, um, we talked with Nick Curcio to see if this was available, and he said, well, under the ordinance under the state law, she can fill out this form from LARA, and that it can go to the city council, and council could decide whether or not to make an exception and, and allow for, um, this, uh, this firework display outside of the normal days and times. Um, but other than that, it, he did not go into whether or not there was additional liability by the city. I neglected to ask him about that, because it did not occur to me, because it was at a private residence.
Okay. It's a good, it's a good question, though. I thought we had a couple of questions from the audience. If you'd just like to come on up, state your name and address, and ask away.
Danielle Vinstra, 1220 Monroe Boulevard, and I got to say, Steve, I agree with you, but I, I am more concerned about the precedent we are setting. People are going to want to apply for their own kind of special thing. My grandma's turning 95, my whatever. We already have people using fireworks outside of the prescribed days, we've already had them in our neighborhood. I don't want any more of them. I'm totally in support of the Juneteenth event, but the idea of giving special permission for fireworks outside of the already annoying July 4th, um, to me is not necessary, or not desirable in my household.
Thank you. Jean, come on up.
I'm Jean Kavanaugh Conlisk, and I've owned the cottage at 60 Lake Shore Drive since, this is 50 years, 1971. And of course, the city put on fireworks in the 70s, but no relation to what we've done in more recent years. But I'll tell you, there were many times my husband would hop up and go down and around because a spark was drifting, and those were all 1920s cottages. Now, most of those have grown up and are a little more than just dried-out, uh, whatever you call it, that baton that they would put in, it looks like the snow fencing after a number of winters. That isn't safe with fireworks. And so I would be very reluctant, if I were you, to give them that permission. I remember people coming and having their picnics on the blankets and having some sparklers. Well, you know, it's not very long before these kids are howling because they've stepped on a sparkler stick. That's all I'll say.
Thank you. Any other public questions, comments? None. Counsel?
How many fireworks are we talking? 20?
It's about 15 minutes or so.
Can I just say, yeah, the same risk, the same risk on the 19th is going to be done like, you know, the more is no less. It's the same risk.
We're good. Thank you. Any other counsel deliberations? I mean...
I, I would just say that I respectfully disagree. I, I'm all for the Juneteenth, but when we approve a special event, we're giving the go-ahead. The difference on Fourth of July is that's the state, the, the days before and after. What, what we're doing is setting a precedent that anybody, any time of year can come in for their event and ask for a special permit to do these fireworks. So I'm scared of the liability if we approve the special event, which is a separate special event, at a separate location other than Elkenberg Park, and it's the homeowner's insurance, when we sign off as a group and we vote for this event, we're saying that that's okay, and I'm not okay with that. So the liability is actually different from those dates, in my opinion, and without a legal opinion from the city attorney, I have no other choice than to try and protect the city of South Haven from the event. Sorry.
I would, I would echo that, as I said at the start, I am, this is very much precedent-setting, very much liability.
I apologize, Mr. Mayor, is it too late to make a public count?
Yeah, we're, we're kind of deliberating now.
Okay.
You're good. Um, so yeah, it's, it's liability, it's precedent-setting, I, if we could get it to the park, if we had more room, um, I wish we could, you know, again, that may be a discussion, I know it was tricky last year to get this off the ground, the first part, this year it went smoother, maybe next year we could, there's work to be done. I would leave it at that. Any other discussion? If not, we should probably roll-call this one. Yes.
Reeser?
Yes.
Schleck?
No.
Sleeper?
Yes.
Arnold?
Yes.
Smith?
No. And it passes. All right, so let's go ahead, on to the next item. And we'll see you at your event.
I'm ready for the bouncy house.
We'll see you at the bouncy house. All right, very good. Let's go ahead, next. City council, we asked to consider the approval of a license agreement for a free library in the Circle Park on Esplanade, and authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to execute the license agreement.
I'll make a motion. Sorry, I clicked to a different page. I'll make a motion to approve the free library in the Circle Park of the Esplanade, and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute the license agreement.
I'll second it.
Very good. We have a motion. We have a second. Kate, tell us more.
Yes, Mayor. Linda Hogan is a property owner who lives at 44 Grand Boulevard and approached city staff about installing a free library in the Circle Park there. So we reached out to the city attorney, and he recommended a license agreement. So we have here, presented for you, the draft of the license agreement to install the free library box in the park area. And we have looked at that, making sure that it would not impair clear vision. And Ms. Hogan would be responsible for making sure that the materials are of good nature and would be responsible for stocking that. And I believe that we have some people here in favor of that.
Absolutely. Well, come on. Why don't we go, let's hear about it. How's that sound? Let's go for it. And I will say, we've probably received more emails in the positive for this than just about anything we've seen lately. I mean, I've got a lot of positive emails, so this was easy. So come on, tell us more.
I'm Linda Hogan. I'm the one that started the ball rolling on this. The idea came to me, and I thought, let me check with all the neighbors. And so I emailed everyone, every homeowner in Monroe Park, and got an overwhelming positive response. I thought, am I the only one that still reads books? Or is everyone into the, you know, the eBooks? But no, they really want it. So within three days, I had all the money to buy the library. So we have it now. Everyone's excited. They're ready bringing books over, so we're looking forward to having that. It would be available to all the residents, the vacationers, the summer rentals, and so...
It's a great idea. Good for you. And good for your neighbors for mobilizing.
I know. They were all excited. So, yeah. Any questions? Yes?
I still don't know what it really is.
Oh, let me tell you.
Is it like what people put on their front yards occasionally?
Yes. It's a box about this big. I submitted a picture and a map. It's about this big. Holds about 40 books, has a glass front. It will landscape right around the pole that it's attached to. And everyone can bring a book, take a book, bring six books, take 12 books.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
Okay.
And I will take care of it and make sure it's clean and orderly.
That's very cool. That's a great idea. Thank you very much for organizing and getting your neighbors excited, too. Guess I should ask anybody else have any other questions before she escapes? Are any other public questions or comments? I don't see a lot of opposition out there tonight. Oh, come on up. I bet you Jean's in there.
Of these at...
Hey, Jean, we just state your name and address again for the record. Thank you.
Jean DeConlisk, 60 Lake Shore Drive. There's one of these across from the picnic area at Kids Corner Park, 90-something. Is that Monroe Street? No. South Haven Street. And it's just there. It's cute. And of course, I spend the winters in Arizona, and somebody just put out a box. Almost like the idea of, you know, the old beer cases that would open up out on the sidewalk. And I picked up a couple of books, and I put a few books in there, and it was fun. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. If there's no other public comments or counsel comments, we have a motion. We have a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. It is approved. Thank you. And thanks for organizing. Next, city council will be asked to approve the low bid from Lawn Boys Inc. for $22,076 for a property maintenance contract for the city of South Haven, and authorizing staff to execute the necessary documents.
I'll make a motion to approve the low bid from Lawn Boys Incorporated for $22,076 property maintenance agreement for the city of South Haven, and authorizing staff to execute the necessary documents.
Second. All right, we have a motion and a second. Kate?
Yes, sir. So we are finding ourselves, like most of, not just Michigan, but most of the people here in South Haven, we're having a bit of a labor shortage. And out of the 10 people that we usually hire for our park staff, we've only been able to hire three. So that's kind of putting us at a disadvantage in getting a lot of our duties done. If we are able to get this property maintenance contract done, this will alleviate some of our mowing duties, so we can focus more on trash collection and bathroom cleaning. So this is just kind of a necessity while we're looking at these labor shortages this year.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
You just said a magic word. You said trash?
Yes.
So all the trash cans you see down by the beach that are overflowed and stuff thrown all over, they will take care of that now?
No, that's still, on ours, this would be, I believe, the maintenance for just mowing and maintaining the areas.
Oh, is that nothing to do with that?
No, that's still on our park staff, which we are supplementing with our street department as needed.
Very good. Any public questions, comments on this one? See you in a minute. Other counsel questions? Very straight ahead. Lawn contracts. All right, see you in a minute. We have a motion and a second to approve the bid from Lawn Boys. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. It is approved. Next, city council will be asked to introduce the proposed ordinance to amend Chapter 70 of the South Haven Code of Ordinances, sorry, the city of South Haven Code of Ordinances to update regulations regarding solid waste disposal and collection.
I'll make a motion to introduce a proposed ordinance to amend Chapter 70 of the South Haven City Code of Ordinances to update regulations regarding solid waste disposal and collection.
Second. All right, we have a motion. We have a second. Kate, you want to tell us what's new?
Sure. And I will invite Griffin to jump in here with his microphone on to kind of explain why we need this amendment now.
Good evening. Yes, thank you. The city of South Haven's waste disposal and recycling contract expires in November of this year. In early May, the city put out an RFP, seeking proposals from qualified vendors to provide that service. As part of that process, staff took some time with the city attorney to review the existing ordinances that govern that service, and found that much of the ordinance hasn't been reviewed or touched since 1965. Much of it is currently outdated, and specific sections are no longer consistent with current practice. So the city attorney and staff put together a proposed ordinance amendment for all of you to consider prior to reviewing bids and selecting a new service provider.
Highlights. Tell us what's new.
Sure. Really, in regard to what's new, is the proposed ordinance is much simpler. Just simply looking at pages, the existing ordinance is 11 or 12 pages. The proposed ordinance is down to two or three. We're really simplifying it because the city contracts out for this service. So most of the rules, regulations, as well as practical aspects, such as times of pickup and days of pickups, are outlined in a service agreement as opposed to an ordinance. So really, the proposed ordinance would move many of the substantive terms out of the ordinance and into that service agreement.
That's the key word right there. Thank you. Are there any public questions about this? We've got a public question. Come on up, state your name and address, and fire away.
Susie Katherman, 455 Jones Avenue. I just wondered if the services would change? Like, the services that we get now, that's stuff that's picked up, and would that change? The type, I mean...
What I should say is that we don't know. We're going out for bid, and we're going to have to see what those prices are when we, because we're hoping they don't change. We're hoping we get a good deal, but we also don't know. We know that things are changing. Our last bid was over 20 years ago, and things have drastically changed in the waste hauling and recycling business. So hopefully, they don't change. And if they do, we obviously will be putting lots of people, I notice, on what's to become.
Okay. That was always curious, ma'am. Thanks.
Good question. Thank you. Anybody else? Counsel?
This will be posted in the next two weeks.
I'm sorry?
This will be posted publicly.
Well, this is just the first reading of this modification, but then, yes, we'll be coming back for the second amendment. But I believe the RFP has been out for...
Yeah, the RFP was released May 3rd. Today, exactly, we hosted a pre-bid conference with the potential vendors who have contacted the city to date. Bids will be, the bid period will close on June 28th, and there will be a public opening here in the council chambers at 1:00 PM that Monday.
But this is just the introduction of the ordinance?
This is just the introduction, yes.
We're going to take public comment when it comes to...
Yes, we'll have a public hearing on the 21st.
Thank you.
That was my question also.
My apologies for not being more clear.
No, it looked good. I like it. It's shorter, cleaner. So if we've got no other questions or comments, we have a motion and a second to introduce the proposed ordinance. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. It is introduced. All right, now we're going to receive an update from our South Haven Area Emergency Services Director, Mr. Brandon Hens. Good evening.
Good again. Nice to meet you all in person, finally. We've been busy. We've been inundated with calls lately, as you all have heard. And, but a few of the things that we have been working on to prepare for the summer months. We got them a little bit later on in the year last year, but we do have EMS outfitted bikes now that we're going to ride around during our busy season, our busy festivals in that downtown. And they're loaded up with some first response equipment. AEDs, we're working on strapping them on as well, just to get downtown on those busier days a little bit quicker. Our response to downtown's pretty good, but, and our new drones. We have our new drone, as I'm sure you've seen as well, with the payload delivery system, as well as the infrared camera. We've tested that a little bit with divers in the pool. Even with a wet suit on or a dry suit, it'll still pick up their heat signature in water. Don't know how deep yet. We're going to play with that here over the next couple of weeks. We just had a water rescue training this weekend, actually, so the mission went very well. We're all going to be attending DNR boat training courses this year. Just another way to familiarize ourselves with the waterways a little bit better with our boats. We've also implemented, with the help of Shea's IT, or South Haven IT Department, and I cannot take any credit for this, they implemented a new QR code. And an alert system to alert our visitors and residents. QR code, if you scan it, will take you direct to the page that displays the flag colors for the day, which are updated every three hours by a beach flag attendant. And additionally, if you text beaches to 88877, you'll get a flag color status update, or when they put them up in the morning at 9:00 o'clock, you'll get a flag status update. And then anytime they change the status to red, to yellow, back and forth, you'll be updated as well. Last I looked, and this was last week, I was going to look before I came tonight, I apologize. We had 731 that were registered to receive the alert. So we're getting it out there, getting the word out there. We're just hoping to educate a little bit better. And I was going to bring a T-shirt in, too. Our beach flag attendant T-shirts, we have the QR code on the back. We have a plastered on as everything. So it was a great idea. Jared and Phil really did a good job with that. So we had a pancake breakfast donation, or fundraiser this last week. It was a huge hit. We had 45, around $4,500 in proceeds, around $1,100 in expenses. So we had about $3,000, $3,400 net that we were going to put toward a Aqua Eye sonar device, underwater sonar device. You hold it about 12 inches underwater, and you can scan back, and I think it'll scan, I forget the degrees, I apologize, I meant to bring the paperwork with me. It's a real nice tool to have. I'm very excited about it. We're a little bit short of the cost, but we've had two or three other private donors reach out and said they'd be more than happy to pull up the rest. So hopefully, to get, hopefully to get one ordered within the next week or two. If anything, we're hoping if we do have a victim down, we can scan it, find them quick enough to get them out, possibly resuscitate them, especially in cold water. You have a little bit more time. If anything, it'll provide the family with a little bit, with closure a little bit quicker. So that's another tool we're pretty excited to look at. Year-to-date, we performed, our assistant inspector and deputy chief have performed 118 pre-plans in the city, 57 year-to-date fire code inspections and site reviews, 72 Knox Box inspections and repair updates, which is kind of an ongoing thing. I mean, most businesses, we try to have them install a Knox Box on the front of the business. It has a master key and also houses all the keys for that business. And I'm sure I would be guilty of it, too. You switch a lock in your, in one of your rooms, and you don't put the updated key in there. But it provides us a little bit better access in emergencies. So we've been keeping up on those. 2,074 year-to-date training hours. We've been slamming the training, and I think it shows we've been, we're 240 calls above what we were last year. Last year was our busiest year by 150 calls. And we had about a two-month lull because of COVID between March and April. And don't know why it's so busy, but we have a very, very dedicated staff that, for instance, Saturday, we had 25 calls, and we'd have to ask for assistance for one. And that was a multi-car PI accident that we had to have multiple patients transported from. So we've been very busy, and I don't see anything slowing down anytime soon. But just wanted to give you a little bit of an update on what's going on, and hopefully come back in a couple of months and stay with a nice, easy, breezy summer.
You have a new rescue vehicle, too, right?
Yes, yes. We took delivery of our new rescue, probably about a month ago. We ordered it from Spencer's. We had a committee that came together and designed the truck, and Spencer's built it. It's beautiful. A lot more practical than our old one was. Our old one served us great. We're going to put it up for bid here pretty soon. But as we've had that one for 20 years, we've, you know, why don't we do this on the next one, why don't we do this? And we did it on this one. And it's a really nice truck, drives great. And it's, it actually has slide-out trays where regardless of which side you are on the truck, the tray will slide out 75% out to one side or to the other. So you can pretty much access anything on the truck from either side, so.
It's like a Swiss Army knife on wheels.
It is, it is.
It's super cool.
Yep, yep. It turned out really good. They're really nice. We're very, very happy with it.
Yeah, it's pretty amazing. Any other questions? I'll just say thank you, as always, to you and your staff for keeping us safe every single day. So thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
All right. And now we get an update from our public works director, Mr. Bill Hunter. And Bill has not been busy at all the last couple of days. Good evening, Bill.
Thank you, Your Honor, City Council. I gave a brief update on projects within the city. Phoenix Street Bike Path, we're in the design bidding process, putting together design bidding documents for the street resurfacing project and the bike path. The city is to receive $144,783 in federal funds for the bike path, and $80,000 for the resurfacing of the road. We're expecting the fall of 2021 for this, and this will have to go through the MDOT bidding process. So MDOT is actually, we actually have the contract with MDOT when it comes in front of city council. We actually pay them, but actually, MDOT actually pays the contractor. So they're almost like a middleman, so to speak. Street resurfacing projects are still underway. Hubbard Prospect in Michigan, the lead services are replaced, and that should be, get the final coating on those soon, I think, within the next, maybe even by the end of this week, depending on weather. Concrete stand pipe, we are actually working with Baird and Company on the financing portion of that. Once I get the, which is called the financing projection, what they do is they take our revenues and what we have going out, and we do actually call the flow analysis, and we see where we stand. And that'll be submitted, actually, with our bond council for proceeding with bonds and the replacement of concrete stand pipe. Kentucky Avenue Lift Station, we took that over recently. Shawced it, and staff internally is actually doing the upgrades on that. Covert flushing rates, we do have a final reads on those flushing rates, and they'll be submitting, actually, a flushing rate, recommended flushing rate for covert township. What that is, is historically, that system, when it was built, it was built too large, oversized. You just can't put 20-inch pipe or 12-inch pipe in the ground. You actually have to design it for what are you going to use it for, how many users you're going to have. If you don't, what happens is you build disinfection byproducts, halocic acid, triolomethanes, and it builds up in there. So over the years, we've been flushing to keep those down. Well, actually, no one's been, well, someone's been paying for that water. Everybody's been paying for that water, with the exception of covert township. So this is actually to put actually that cost back on covert township, which I believe is the right thing to do. Distribution materials inventory, that is actually, again, another change by the state legislators, changes to the Safe Water Drinking Act. This goes back to the lead and copper rule. Now they're trying to, now they're actually telling us we need to do a four-point verification on 551 sites within South Haven. That means we have to actually pothole the road. We have to actually pothole on both sides of the curb box, and we have to actually get inside. Those are physical that we have to have eyes on, and that is, we're not getting any money from this. We have to do this ourselves. This is supposed to verify, actually, our materials inventory to see what our, how correct it is. If it's not correct, we could actually be required to do more. New substation project, design proposals are in, and we're in amongst the design. Was looking at some easements from some neighboring property owners, still waiting to hear back on that. Cross connection inspections, that's still an ongoing thing, system-wide. Recently had my own, went very smooth. Some of them are not smooth. I mean, I'll be honest with you. Not everybody's house is plum the same. I know what he's going to look for, so I knew what to do. But a lot of people don't. So Jerry does a great job inspecting. He's going to tell you exactly why you're doing it. He's going to educate. He takes the time to do it, which I think is a very, very thoughtful thing to do. The electric vehicle charging units, we just met, actually, with the contractor, and that should be installed shortly. So we're getting two electrical vehicle charging units in the Huron parking lots. We actually also have budgeted through CMAC funding. We have two more, actually, through CMAC, that we're going to put in other locations. So within the next couple of years, we should have four vehicle charging units. And if anybody's familiar with this, when you start doing it, you get your apps, and these people are, they're constantly on... these people are, they're constantly on their apps, where do I charge? And actually, this will actually put our, our name on the map, so to speak. People actually driving through will now see those sites. And that's what I'm hoping that's going to do is just draw those people actually into the town. Bear Park easement amendment, we did, City Council did have that signed and we're hoping to get that fence installed by, looks like the fall of this year. It's materials difficult to get this time, as anybody's aware, so. County 911 installation at the subcontractor for a place, for a placement of the generator. This is actually at the small tank, the 300,000 tank that's right behind Walmart. 911 is putting the generator, but they're allowing us to utilize it, which means now we don't lose elevations on the tanks anymore when there's power outages. And we have the same thing going also with the other tank as well at the Blueberry with the AT&amp;T. So we're, so now if there's power outages, we maintain our levels. Before what we'd have to do, staff could estimate it, but it does come at time when it's so, it's off for so long, they have to get readings at the base of the tank to see where the levels are at. So then you have to do your math. Crazy.
No one likes me.
Distribution, water infrastructure needs survey. We were approached actually through the, through the EPA to submit. It was a pretty lengthy application. What this does though, it puts us actually in a category where we're giving information to the EPA on needs, 20-year capital needs. And this is actually for, I should have included this, but I didn't. This is for the whole United States. So when you say, when you see 472 billion, that's for the whole United States, that's not just for us. So we're putting our name in the pot saying, here's the needs for South Haven, here's the needs for Shawssa, this is what we need. And with hopes actually it gets a lot of attention, plus maybe in the future it gives us eligible for any kind of grant funding. Federal appropriations request, I did put in something to get some, for an eligible project, hoping for some, I think we submitted for beach nourishment. So that was a little bit challenging, but we were able to do it. Drain Commission is going to do a project actually at Center Street. It's actually, they're going to do what they call like a two, two, two outlet stage. Also with that, they'll be able to soften the slope and they could be able to use that maybe to clean the ravine better. During that week, while the contractor is working, they want it closed, but we told them he has to open it up for the weekend. So they're not working on the weekend, so it should be easy enough to do. Core City Phase Five should be done within the next week. They're going to be done, their substantial completion date was actually in October. So they're getting done a lot earlier than originally. So they're actually going to get it done in this fiscal year and we budgeted actually some money for that to roll over thinking we were going to split the costs. So that's a good thing for the, even the coming budget going forward. AT&amp;T small antenna installation, the main, the main antenna that was installed on the Blueberry tank is complete. We actually turned the power onto it. I don't know if it's active yet, judging from this weekend, I don't think it was. They actually, we're in the planning stages though, installing three more antennas, small, small antennas. Probably about a year and a half ago, City, we changed actually, well, we added two our ordinance, the small antenna portion of it. This is that part of it where AT&amp;T will be installing three small mini antennas, one at the North Beach, one at the South Beach, and they're looking at one actually on water and Phoenix and it'll actually be attached to the fixture there. AMI project, we do have the stations are in, not installed, they're in the garage and we're proceeding forward with that. On a recent note, everybody's aware, we did have a power outage. It happened, I was actually outside doing some balts and my wife said, hey, the power's out. She thought it had something to do with the dryer. I said, no honey, it's not the dryer. So I walked inside and I checked everything and immediately what I did is I called, I texted, well, first thing I do is I text the person on call and right when I'm doing that, Kate's texting me, hey, where's the power? And then all of a sudden the text starts coming in. We did immediately, we were able to call AEP, but their, their information center, it's a kid in the information center and he tells us there's a fault. That's all he knows. So once he did that, they were able to dispatch crews, AEP staff to investigate because it wasn't on our end. The first thing we do is we send staff to the substations because it could be something that happened. I send staff to both substations, we have no fault our end and so it was a lack of feed from AEP. So AEP gets called, there's at least two and a half hours for them just to get staffed there. So that's two and a half hours. So they get staffed there and they have to, what they call is inspect the line. So they start from where they know they have power and inspect the line going forward. Once doing that, they found actually the fault was on, it's called the Bangor Hartford feed, it's a 69 KV feed. That's the feed that we're, we're, we're on right now and it's between, believe it or not, poles 87 and 88. I don't know where those are at, but that's what they gave me, which is good. They gave me pole numbers. So tree fell and a tree actually fell outside of the right-of-way. So their right-of-way was clear, it was outside of their right-of-way that the tree fell in. So that being said, once they, in that location, they couldn't get equipment. So no equipment, they can't get it. So they had to wait now and get more people to do everything by hand. So not only do they have to, if you imagine our guys up in bucket trucks, they have to climb the two, the two separate poles, 87 and 89, and they have to new, put new wires in between there by hand. So they had to call more staff to do everything by hand, which on the phone, the, the young gentleman said it's going to be another four to five hours. So we knew then it was going to be somewhere around 4:00 AM. They did turn it on by I think 3:36. So I received a lot of emails, a lot of people stressing concern, stressing frustration, and I, and I hear them. And it is, I get, receive input on we should change providers. Those are good inputs. I mean, and it's nowadays, and we live in a society where we can do that. I mean, if you have AT&amp;T, you can switch and Verizon will pay you to switch. I mean, it's, it's that easy. The power game, it's not that easy. You have what they call is RTOs, it's Regional Transmission Organizations. That is the, RTOs is the only two places you can purchase power from. You have PJM and you have MISO. And that's it. We are in what they call the PJM section, which is a part of Indiana, Michigan. That's where we buy all of our power. So we only buy power on the market through PJM. Now MISO, that's consumers, that's Wolverine. I think there's like two other players in the game, but AEP is the other one. So to switch, it sounds easy, but to switch is, if even if we're allowed to switch, say the Federal Energy Commission upon a petition to them, say, sure, we can. I don't think we can because we're probably going to get sued because AEP just ran a whole new line to the substation. But say, say they do allow us to. And say we find a provider that's in the MISO area and say they're three or four, say it's consumers, let's just throw that out there. So I find a line and I have a design built and I say, okay, consumers, here's what I can, now you have to do a design build. So altogether, say it's $15 million. We could build that, now I have to let it sit for four years because I have to buy power four years out. So now we're still, we're still on PJM, we're still buying power. I'm now starting to buy power on MISO until we're able to switch. Say we do switch and say we still have the same outages. I mean, it's, that's one thing to do and you could do it. I wouldn't recommend that because I just talked at the NPPA, I even asked the question, is there any municipalities that are being fed by both RTOs? The answer is none. You got to pick your poison. So this is, lack of a better term, this is our poison. The other solution, what you could to make yourself more reliable is generation. I don't know the last time we had generation here, but I believe it was a coal plant, I believe it was parked somewhere by the old water plant that's actually now, so the old coal plant was probably where the new water plant is.
On the South Beach.
On the South Beach, yes. So, so where the new one is, the foundation, that's where the old one is. And then the plant was actually where the parking lot was, if I'm not, well anyways, long story short, that's what we could do. Another thing to look at too is you could do, we could do renewable energy. We could look at solar fields. That would help us actually in our renewable energy credits, which we're required to do. It's going up, at least we have to buy at least 25%, but what's our return on investment? I can buy it actually renewable energy credits, very cheap on the market, but my capital outlay to build that would be quite substantial and I don't even know if actually, so these are the challenges we look at every time. I mean, this is, I feel everybody, believe me, that is something nobody wants to go through. That was a long outage, it really was. Some of the things too that we, and as South Haven were doing to improve the system, just in our capital plan alone, we're looking at building another substation. I mentioned that here. That is something actually to have another feed into the system, improve our distribution, that's $5 million. We are also spending, and this is thankful to City Council, we now have two tree crews that are out, two tree crews that are out just, one we have dedicated just doing power lines and the other one can do power lines. So we're spending annually just to clear lines, $300,000 a year, just out clearing lines, making our system more reliable. I believe we're doing everything we can. Unfortunately, we're on the end and we are reliant on something else. Is there a solution? All those factors I just told you, you can do any of those, you really can. It's just, how much do you want to spend? How much money and what are the rates going to look like? These are the challenges that, that we all have. So I'm here to answer any question City Council might have. Go ahead, Jeff.
Go ahead.
I understood your explanation and that was great and it made a lot of sense and I'm not trying to switch.
No.
But my dad used to race cars and we always carried spares, spare, all kinds of things. How come we don't have a second line? How we have a backup line?
Well, we do have a backup line, I mean, we do.
How come that didn't come into play?
Well, right now with the upgrade we're having to the main line, right now we're totally on that one feed. Once actually the new line comes into play, which will be in July 7th, we'll have that other backup line until such time and that won't be active until July 7th unfortunately. That is a very good point, yes.
So there's a plan. My brother's birthday, so I'll remember that.
I'm not going to tell you anything you don't know, but we can talk about all the cost of renewable energy, but that is the future. We can talk about the cost of switching and that's a reality. But there is the other reality. The restaurants and the businesses in this town have gone through hell the last 16 months. And now on a Saturday night, when this town was full with tourists, they had to close down in the middle of cooking meals. And that had to cost them, I can't even guess how much money it cost this town. So all I'm asking you to do, as you're looking at these options, as you come to us, just remember the other side, the cost of not doing something is incredibly high and it hits the people most vulnerable. Even aside from the residents, the businesses took a beating that night.
Thank you. It's a very good point, Steve.
July 7th sounds great, but my concern of what you said is that, and it bothers me and I'm sure we're under contract and there's nothing that we can do, but maybe residents can write letters and other things. The biggest thing that bothered me is it was two and a half hours before they could even respond. Do they not have enough employees at their headquarters to respond quicker than, that's two and a half hours right there, burnt.
Yeah.
And gone. And then find out that it was another hour or two because it wasn't on the public right-of-way. To me, that seems way too long and, but don't know who to complain to. I know it's not the city's fault. I know we spent a lot of money maintaining our systems. We have a great system and our secondary line's going to make that even better. So hopefully that's the, the highlight of the evening, but the two and a half hours response time to me is just not satisfactory.
Yeah, yeah.
But what do you do?
No, you're right. I mean, they, they do have a large system and I don't know who on their side quantifies like how many linemen's per how many feet of this, there's, there's some, probably somebody that did the math and I don't know who it is, you're right. I mean, there should be someone, maybe more local in that area, but that is a long time to wait.
Yeah. And you and I talked about it as well, just, we should have pretty rapid communication knowing we're at the end of the line and maybe part of our future communication could be that channel and then maybe we can share with them how much we're spending on tree trimming and see what they're spending on tree trimming and compare budgets. So the only other thing too, just related to businesses, as you and I talked a little bit, but just if we could work on a little kind of a relatively rapid communication to our business owners, let them sign up if they want to get it, but just so we could fire it right out. Because I know you've got, you know, businesses that make and sell ice cream, you've got restaurants, you've got a lot of people that need, you know, if anything else, just to say you can send your staff home. Because I know I was, you know. And then we had AT&amp;T, as you mentioned, and I must admit, that was a very bizarre night when my power went out, which doesn't go, usually I leave town when it goes out. So this is one of the first times I've been around for a power outage, I will tell you. And then I had no phone. I'm thinking, let's see, this is really bad. We just got through a pandemic, now I got phone and everything's gone. What's, I've lost all communication. So I had to, so I never got any of those emails everybody sent out, which was fascinating. So Bill, bless his soul, I know where Bill lives. So I had to find Bill at his house and go, hey, Bill, what's going on? I got nothing. I've got no communication. So, and I also got to come to Shea's that night. Your staff was very gracious with me and I'm just, can anyone tell me what's going on? Because I've got no ears, no eyes, nothing. So it was a fascinating night, I will say. If we could up the communication with them, that'd be fantastic. And if we do hear what happened to AT&amp;T, that'd be good because that was kind of a weird night without either. So.
Yes.
And I have one additional question, not related to electricity.
Okay.
And I think, I think we're not blaming you certainly, we know, we, the city's doing a great job. Our stuff is top-notch. But about a month ago or two months ago, you were doing a Zoom Town Hall meetings, asking about the bike paths on, did you get good turnout? Did you get good data? Have you, I don't know if you're ready to share, but did it, did it go well? Did you get input?
It went, it went well. It did go well. The last date actually, because I did, it was the whole month, so the last, the last I didn't get any input, but the ones prioritized, so the three of them, it was, it was good, good input received. To, to give you kind of a, I would say it's, it's pretty much.
It's just one that's important to word too, that's why I was asking.
Oh, oh yeah. And I do have it and I have to bring it back to City Council. It'll be a report bringing back to City Council, my findings. I had, everything was recorded of course, so there are minutes taken where everybody giving their input and everything will presented as a whole to the, and then I'll bring, I'll surmise what I can from the meetings and give a recommendation to City Council.
Also off power, Heskel barriers on South Beach. We've gotten some emails and figured I'd just check in, because I always do.
I mean, that's a, it's a, it's a very good, yes, Heskel barriers on South Beach. It's still early for me. I, my, my reservation's about pulling any of those out are, we're still above the average. For example, we did open up a Dunkley and Dunkley, but we only opened it up to a point where I could actually close it off very quickly. Left the pumps in place, a majority of the others, so it's quick to easy to pump down. Because we should be going, it should crest in July and then start going down, but we're still above the averages. And my biggest concern with South Beach is, and it's honestly, it's after the season. It's what's going to happen in November when we get those gale winds. Actually one of, that's my biggest reserve, my biggest worry with that. I would almost like to hold off on that one until the spring of next year and then if we're still going further down.
Because there's some points, I noticed it dips. There's some points that it goes so high that it's actually higher than the Heskel barriers we have down low. So as you see it, and it'll slope, do we need all those?
Getting rid of all of the Heskels or just some of them?
Just some of them. The ones that are, obviously, I mean, if the water's going to be that high that these are needed, it's already crested over the other ones. And we're already in trouble anyways, that's a lot of water. So just, just things I've noticed, I've had a lot of people ask about it.
I mean, we'll continue to look at it. It's just, we're just wanting to make sure that we're protecting the 11,000 water, drinking water customers we have. And it is those, it is those November gales that will push the water into the parking lot, that's, that's the real concern. So we'll continue to look at it.
Yes.
Very good. Any other questions?
One last thing, maybe, maybe you could help me out in the next few days or something and get with me and send me an email, but unfunded mandates and budgets don't go along. So regarding Edgel or Eggle or Eagle, however you want to pronounce it. With Shawssa, maybe you can fill me in a little bit more in detail on that. And then also an update on the Dunkley Avenue.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
That would be an interesting discussion probably for many years to hear, because That would be an interesting discussion probably for many years to hear, because there's a lot of unfunded mandates that are pumping up rates.
Well, I can talk a long time actually on safe water drinking and unfunded mandates.
Let's go, safe water.
That could be a whole workshop.
We'll save that. Save that one. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you again. I apologize for coming to your house on a pork night. Sorry. It's all I had. Oh yeah. All right. We are now at that time of the meeting when citizens of the audience will be heard on items not on the agenda. If you'd like to ask a question or make a comment, just come on up to the podium, state your name, state your address. I know this fine gentleman and you'll have up to five minutes. Good evening, Mr. Gruber.
Clark Gruber, 525 Superior Street. I was going to talk on another subject. It got covered. So I thought it would take five minutes of your time. You can hear me now because I have Verizon. You would have heard me on Saturday too.
Rub it in.
I do two shows a night. I do want to thank Bill for his excellent explanation of what was happening. I know that there was a lot of questions because we've done so many upgrades. And if you look at what our power was 20, 25 years ago to where we are now, it's pretty amazing. But it seems like we've had three major problems of late that we just, we're years in the making. And knowing that we've got the new feed coming in July, I thought we already had that second feed in, but they take years to put those in. I'm just wondering, because we get the power from one source, had the problem between 88 and 89 happened, do we know if the second feed would have covered us? Then we would not have lost power or is that before the why? And I, and then I, that was, that was actually an extra credit question. But I think that would be one, would we would want to know where the problems are going to occur and are we going to still have power? And if you haven't seen that new substation and new line, you know, go on the trail to Van Buren State Park. It's pretty impressive. So I'm just really glad that we've had the problem and then Bill was here on a Monday night and giving updates. So we can all now spread the word now that we all know, you know, if we tell two friends and they tell two friends, think about that. So three minutes to spare.
Thank you.
You going to sing? Thank you, Clark. Appreciate it. Anybody else?
Danielle Veenstra, 1220 Monroe Boulevard. I have a question about how regulations, the new golf cart regulations are being disseminated. And can I get a pamphlet or a hundred of them to hand out? Because I see an awful lot of golf carts with no seat belts, children unrestrained, blah, blah, blah. And I'd be more than happy to trot up to them and say, by the way, you're out of line with your golf cart, short of screaming at them.
Excellent.
Yeah. So how are we telling them, stop doing this?
Well, we have had it on. I think the city's newsletter, we put it out on the radio. We had it out on our, on our org, on our city website. Of course, we do have officers. They don't get to see everybody because they cover a lot. But we do have a pamphlet that we have for people who would like to get their golf cart inspected. I can get some pamphlets put together and you can come by and pick them up on Friday if you'd like.
I would be happy to do that. And also the other question, what does the new sticker look like? So that I can kind of look for that sticker.
It's, I think we put a picture in our, in one of our council packets. I can email you a copy of it.
It looks a lot like a Michigan license plate.
Right.
Larger than a, a little larger than my cell phone.
And it's got a number.
Okay, thank you. That's very helpful and I will stop by, Kate.
Sure.
Good question.
Hello.
Good evening.
My name's Nancy Nat. You've heard me a lot on Zoom, but I'm here tonight to talk about the baseline environmental assessment that was done at 229 Elkenberg in 2015. And although I've asked several city representatives, never was it revealed how dangerously contaminated that the site is. And I would like to read to you because I actually read the report and was surprised that nothing was ever said about these things. There was contamination found at that site in both the soil and the groundwater. And some of the contaminants were heavy metals such as lead, volatile organic compounds, which are carcinogenic, semi-volatile organic compounds and poly-nuclear aromatic hydrocarbons. There are appendices throughout the report which show the actual concentrations, which are exceedingly above the acceptable limit. Once ground is broken for the Overton development, these contaminants will be leased into our environment and causing potential harm to the residents of South Haven. So I went to the do care part of the baseline environmental assessment. And because of the high level of contamination, there is a requirement that the report be sent to the Michigan Department of Environmental Quality. Because this is what they call a facility because of the high level of contamination. And by law, they are to, we are, the city is supposed to undertake measures to prevent exasperation and also to mitigate exposure of unnecessary risk to the humans that live in the area. The conclusions of that due diligence summary are as, as follows. Within six months of becoming the owner of the site, the city must submit the BEA to the Michigan Department of Environmental Quality to document that this is a highly contaminated facility. Also, I'm reading directly from this report, within eight months of becoming the owner of the site, a do care plan must be completed and posted on the site so that people are aware of what's going on and can take precautions if necessary. I then contacted Ray Spalding, who is, works for the Michigan Department of Environmental Quality. And he was not able to find the 229 Elkenberg BEA on the database, the state database. So I sent it to him in May of 2021. And my questions for the city council are as follows. If, is there proof and will you provide proof of documentation stating that you sent the baseline environmental report of 229 Elkenberg to the state of Michigan as required by law, within the six month window of November 2015 to 2016? The reason I state November of 2015 is because that's when the baseline environmental assessment was signed over or signed off by Brian Deset as being accepted by the city. Also, number two, is there proof or will you provide proof of documentation that a do care plan has been completed by the city of South Haven for the contaminated property at 229 Elkenberg? And that this plan was completed in the window required by law of November 2015 through July 2016. That was that eight month window I just talked about.
And you've got about one minute, just so I know.
Okay, I've got one more question. Number three, if this do care plan has been completed, why is it not posted on the site as required by law? And those are the questions.
Thank you. Appreciate it. I know some of this, we've, we've got a lot of questions that have been posted, so.
We sure, we sure have. And I'm glad that she brought up her comments and she's had her five minutes. We did find the BEA and we actually have a transmital letter that we not only transmitted to them, but they transmitted back to us, thank you for submitting your BEA. So we have all that and we would be happy to transmit that to you. We will happy to share that with you. Now Ray Spalding was the project manager for the factory condos. So that's probably why you know Ray, but Ray may or may not know about the Overton site because Ray may not have everything. And Ray probably hasn't been back to the office since the shutdown. And maybe he shared that with you. I'm not sure.
Well, he looked at the database, so he can look at that from anywhere.
And I can give you the transmital letter we have stamped, received. Thank you for turning in your BEA.
Okay.
And we also have the do care plan. I don't know the dates, but we do have a do care plan as well as a phase one, a phase two and the BEA for that property. So we were more than happy to turn that over for you too as well.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
Mr. Mayor, can I say one quick comment? I just want to thank you, Kate, for being so on top of that.
Sure. You know what? We, we, we looked back in our records and we were happy to find that authorization because we also, we all know what it looks like to, and you don't have those, those documentation, but we have the stamped letter of receiptable from Eagle. So we're formally DEQ and we'll be happy to share that.
And again, we appreciate a lot of the questions that have, are coming up from neighbors and residents. I mean, this is how we're all, we're going to learn and we're going to move forward and get that site cleaned up and livable.
That's right.
Any other questions or comments? Come on up. I believe you applauded the electric charging stations earlier. That was you? Okay, good.
David Veenstra, 1220 Monroe, excuse me, in, in connection with EV charging stations. It has occurred to me before, it would be great if the city could get at some point, maybe at least one EV. Because, you know, they're, they're building them now to go 200 miles on a charge. And with the running around that you do in the city, you know, obviously not every single vehicle would be, you know, prepared for that. But I think we could look at getting one of a, you know, smaller vehicle that can do running around and never use a drop of gas. Thank you.
A very good idea. Thank you for the suggestion. Good evening.
Good evening. Mary Hasley, 726 North Shore Drive. It's H O S L E Y. I am here, I could appear on several items, but with the limited time, I'll discuss Overton. I had mentioned at the planning commission on Thursday about the missing middle book. This had been recommended and I got it and read it. And I was very pleased to see that the whole focus of the missing middle was having a footprint equal to the size of the home and increased density is by having dwelling units in that home. And so it's not a huge building and it blends more into the neighborhood layout. At the end of that planning commission meeting, Planning Commissioner Nies mentioned that it's not just missing middle, it's also affordability. And it seems like the focus is really more on affordability as opposed to missing middle. But the housing authority report that had been shared with me focused on the missing middle, senior housing, said that subsidized housing is well covered in the city of South Haven. And the first public hearing for the Overton where we got to see the plan that was supposedly tentative, it showed two huge buildings. One had 60 units, the other one had 58. And it just didn't fit in with the plan, but we were told it's only preliminary and there'll be many opportunities to review other plans. And knowing that they have to have grants due by October 2021, I was just wondering, when will we get to see them? Because it's now almost two months later. We haven't seen anything, but we keep being told that there will be many opportunities. And with limited hearing times, I just wanted to know when that would be. And also I wanted to point out that in this book, there's also a section that cites the state of Michigan and Jim Tischler is mentioned with the State Land Bank Authority and how they coordinate within the city and other smaller developers to work on the missing middle, taking into account affordability to do it in a, in increments. And that is, seems like a benefit for our area where we would be utilizing our local citizens to not only plan but build as opposed to large companies located in a different state with different dynamics like mass transit, subway, city buses, which we don't have the same scale here. And so it's just a concern to me that things are being developed, insufficient opportunities are being provided to provide input by those being impacted. And it would just be nice to have numbers to provide transparency with regard to the, the exact number of housing units needed for what type of housing dwelling inhabitants being sought and the number of parking. And of course, the parking is going to be dependent on how walkable a community is and how close the jobs are to the walkability and mass transit. And that was a key thing with the missing middle in the book by Dan Perelak. We don't have those mass transits that Chicago has, which is where the builder is located. And we don't even have the bus system out of Grand Rapids, which I think is where possibly our consultant is located. So we're having input from people who live in, sit in areas that are not the same as our town. And it would be nice to have data, raw numbers to support what they're recommending so that there's full transparency. And one other aspect that I noticed walking around with a friend this weekend is that it's actually not that walkable because a lot of cars stick out past the part that they have in front of their garage and block the sidewalks such that you have to walk in the street. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Do we have a tentative date where we're going to plan on bringing this back? I think that was one question.
Yes, I was planning on addressing this in my comments, but I like two, two bites of the apple, if you will. We are planning on having a workshop with Habitat at 5:30 on 621. So your next council meeting, 5:30, about an hour and a half before, we'll have, we'll have the Habitat come and actually give their conceptual plan to the council. Council has not formally received that plan, so this will be a formal workshop presentation to the council at that time. June, I'm sorry, June 21 at 5:30 PM.
Two weeks. Two weeks, yep. That'll be a workshop format.
Yep, Monday, the 21st.
Thank you. Who knows coming soon?
I am Lisa Beck. I am at 879 Monroe Boulevard and I hate microphones and stuff, so I'm really nervous. But I also am here for the Overton project. There's a lot of people in the neighborhood, all around the neighborhood, not just people in the factory building this, that, that have a lot of concerns about this. One is the density. You have 144 units in, some people say four acres, some say six acres. It's just too much density. I don't know if you on Memorial Weekend came down Elkenberg by the park there. Everybody's double parked. It's great. They're having a great time, but there's already a lot of people and a lot of traffic. Elkenberg is going to be a major throughfare to the beach. You've already got Indiana coming the other way, which I used to live on Indiana, and there's a lot of traffic coming from downtown that way. You can't park. 1.24 parking spaces is simply not enough. If you're saying that you're putting this in for the missing middle or the more affordable housing, either way, you have to work. People are going to be working. There's going to be two cars because if you look up on Yelp, the walkability, it's a 35. You must have a car if you live in that area to go to Myers, to Walmart, to work. Where are the guests going to go? You know, you can't have your grandmother with no place to park. It's just going to be too much. And I agree with everyone that's mentioned before. We've sent questions in. We don't feel it's been transparent at all. The plans that we saw were nothing like the first meetings. We want something that is simulated into the neighborhood. We want the teachers to have a place where they can buy a home. The police, this, that, you know, a first home, a second home, a nice home. But when you've got ugly three building or three story apartment buildings that look like dorms or prisons frankly, I don't think people are going to buy those and I don't think it fits in with the neighborhood. We also, as you know, the development right across the street has been developed like crazy. They're adding five more houses on just the one part. That's too many people in one area. They said they were going to have green space. They just chopped all that green space down. They'll do the same on the other side, I feel like. And Habitat for Humanity, I wish it was related to the Habitat for Humanity. I don't know if you've looked them up on Yelp or apartment.com. Their management has gotten, I think there was one C and the most rest were Ds and Fs. And who's going to actually manage the property? And you have that many people there. It's just too much. It's not good for the neighborhood, in my opinion. And I think that there needs to be a lot more input from the citizens, not just in that area, the whole city, the whole city. Cause I think we do need housing, but we need the right kind of housing. And we need it to be affordable. As you know, the property that they've developed there was going to be affordable. I don't know about you, but 585,000 is not that affordable. So we also need to be sure that it's going to be affordable and for the middle, missing middle and not turn into summer rentals, you know, and then people buying it out and then renting it. I've owned two rentals in South Haven for 20 years, not weekly. We deliberately kept them monthly. But it's not easy to get good tenants and you really need to be on top of it. We're selling them for that reason, but thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Hello.
Hello.
I'm Kate Engelbrecht. I live at 125 Elkenberg Street in the factory condos. I reviewed the agenda packet that was sent out in the, or was available in the documents today. And I noticed that there was a payment to Clark Hill PSC for Personnel Legal Services for over $20,000 for March and April. Is that a repetitive expense or is that a one-time expense? Is there anything you can tell me about that?
That means something we have to direct to our city manager.
That's a one-time expense and it's for personnel matters?
Okay, thank you. I also have a concern about Trailside and what has been going on there in the last several weeks. They tore down a bunch of trees, which has been mentioned on Elkenberg Street. They tore down a bunch of trees, which has been mentioned, on Elkenburg Street, and the tree trunks were dug up over the last week and a half or two weeks. The dirt, which is contaminated, they have plaques on every corner saying that anything eight inches or below, you should not be digging because of the contamination there. Those tree trunks have been exposed for at least ten days. With those tree trunks, I have no idea what contaminants have been exposed to the air and to the people walking by during those ten days, but I'm concerned that it doesn't appear that anybody has been monitoring that or putting a rush on getting those trunks moved out of there. They were taken out yesterday and today, but for the previous week and week and a half, everything was going into the air, and I'm very concerned about that. On St. Joseph's Street, there are three homes there that all of a sudden, they have probably dug down at least five feet, and a six-feet-wide and six or eight-feet-long area has been dug up, and now there are piles of either side in front of three homes. My understanding is that was done because they need to put a foundation in before they can put the front steps in. Now here's three more places where there is contaminated soil that is exposed and escaping into the air. Something needs to be done about all this contamination that is just floating around in our city. My other concern, that I'm looking for direction from you folks as to what needs, how to approach this, and perhaps I'm just letting Kate know about this. There are several streets in the city, Monroe Boulevard, Elkenburg Street, South Haven Street, Monroe Street, where there are a lot of hedges that people have put alongside their sidewalks as a barrier that are encroaching over onto the sidewalks, and it's difficult for people to walk along there. And I can give someone the, I don't have the exact addresses, but I can certainly point someone to where those are, if I can find out who. And there is one home, I don't know the address, I apologize for that, at the intersection of Monroe Boulevard and Monroe Street, where the hedges are so tall that when you pull up to the intersection, it's right by Kids Corner, and when you pull up there and you want to turn right to go north on Monroe Boulevard, you can't see if someone's coming, or if you want to turn south to go on Monroe Boulevard, you can't see if someone's coming because the hedges are so tall. And my understanding is that there have been other places where people have had either fences or hedges that tall, that the people have been encouraged or forced to reduce their hedges at that, you know, within a certain length of that corner, down to three feet or two feet or something.
About thirty seconds.
So, those are my comments for tonight.
We'll take your comments, and we'll follow up. Kate, do you have any, just a quick comment on just as far as the digging up dirt at that site? Just, I mean, we've been through this a few times, I know.
We have, we have reached out to the owners out there who are, I think Comptons have been doing it, making sure they're doing their do-care. But we also have contacts with the Eagle office in Kalamazoo, and we can ask them to see if they're being, you know, consistent with the do-care plan out there. We have a consultant that we work with through Envirologic, and we'll consult with them and kind of pass these concerns along and get some guidance on what to do next.
Yeah, I know I've had questions before as well, but we will follow up.
Does someone from the city kind of patrol, oops, excuse me, patrol or go around periodically and look for?
Building inspector?
We have a code enforcement, but code enforcement really doesn't do too much with the brownfields. We only have too many of those. We did know that they were chopped down, but we had, this is the first I've heard that they were pulling the roots out, so, so no, we had not heard that. Okay. So I, this is the first I've heard about the roots being pulled out, but we can reach out to our environmental consultant and see what the next steps are.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank, I appreciate it.
One comment, if I could. You're referring to my property at Monroe and Monroe.
Oh.
A year ago, I took pictures, went to the zoning manager, and I'm compliant. They do drawings, three of them, and I am one hundred percent compliant. Last year, I also spent almost a thousand dollars and knocked two and a half foot off the height. They've grown back, of course, it's a spring, and about a week after they flower, I will cut them back again and trim them. But they are completely compliant, you can check with the zoning manager.
Oh, okay. All right, thank you.
Thanks again. Any other questions? If anyone has not been up, if not?
I would ask for a five-minute recess, if there was any more.
I think we're good. I think everyone's been up. All right.
I'm sorry, I have something. I'm, my name is Serge Boocassini, I'm at one twenty-five Elkenburg as well. Just very quickly, Mayor, you said before, contact us with any questions. I sent thirty-four questions to the City Council about a month and a half ago, and I have yet to receive even a got your questions, I'll respond or will respond. The questions relate to the Overton site. They cover things like density, environment, and transparency. And my concern is all the issues that were discussed, but the inclusion of people in the area and feeling that you are being transparent with us in terms of what's happening at that site. There's a workshop in two weeks. The last time I spoke with you, you said nothing is moving forward, we're taking our time. A workshop with a formal presentation to the City Council is a lot more than nothing is happening. So I just feel like there's zero transparency here. I spent an absolute fortune moving, my wife and I, to South Haven and moving to that area because it was far enough from the density of downtown, but yet close enough to the beautiful beaches and the beautiful scenery that you have here. I was shown from the City Council a development that was absolutely beautiful that was going to go up next to us, and the next thing I see is a picture of what was shown a few weeks ago, which looks like low-income housing, and was told that we're going to break ground in October. So I don't see that as transparent, I don't see that as incorporating local community in the discussion. No one is against the growth of South Haven. I happened to, I fell in love with South Haven. I'm not against the growth of South Haven, I'm not against affordable housing. What I am against is the inability to be transparent with the people who live in the neighborhood, all the people who live in the neighborhood, and I just don't feel that that's occurring. So you asked, you said, come to us with questions. I did, I got no response. So I'd like to know how I can get a response.
I don't have your email, actually.
I'm sorry, I sent it to the City Council.
I didn't get it.
I don't recall it either.
If we missed your email, I'd be happy to get you your answers, but.
And I met with, I mean, I had a phone call from your neighbors.
You did, and I said the same thing to you two weeks ago.
Yeah, and I want to be very clear, I mean, we've been working on this project for, you know, a while now. I mean, as I said to you, we as a council have not, we're getting this, we'll be getting this in a couple of weeks at this workshop. So that's, when I say this, we're going to be getting it a couple of weeks.
We don't know what we're getting yet.
So, exactly, so.
I can't give you answers if we don't know.
I think you're thinking this is done. It's not done. It's going to be coming.
It sounds very much done to me.
And I understand that, but it's not.
Matter of fact, at the last council meeting, I thought I heard we're going to break ground in October.
No, they can't break ground if they have to apply for the LIHTC funding on October first. LIHTC funding applications are on October first. That's not a groundbreaking, that's an application period.
Who's applying October?
We don't even have a contract with them yet.
That's what they're aiming for, should they get the permission to have a purchase agreement. So we're kind of dealing with some assumptions here that are not grounded in fact, where the council has to receive a plan, council have to say this meets a lot of our priorities, and council will have to say, let's go ahead and negotiate a purchase agreement. We're not there yet.
We're not even, we're not there. So there's still work to be done. There have been meetings, there was an initial conceptual workshop, there was kind of a period where nothing happened, we've had some workshops with a subcommittee of sorts, and now it's going to come to this group.
Do you feel that's where we are? No, no one agrees, no one in that neighborhood agrees with.
I believe there has been transparency, so please don't include me in your.
Oh, I wasn't, I wasn't talking to you, I was talking to the people who actually, I'm sorry, the people who live on.
All right, sir, I need you to judge us, us, okay? We're good. Okay. Have a good night.
Can I make a comment? You know, I keep hearing about transparency. Three and a half years ago, there was a meeting for the whole community at the high school. A lot of people, at least a hundred people came to that. Let me finish, you spoke, my turn to speak. My turn to speak, sir, thank you. About a year, three years ago, we had a meeting at the high school. We had hundreds of people, that's even before I was on City Council, so it was probably closer to four years ago. And we got input, we had people put up on a chart what they wanted from that development. The following year, we had another big meeting for the community. Then we had a third one. Then we took residents from all over this town and created a committee to give input on it. Steve was on it, I was on it, different residents, including people all around that community, including a woman from the factory loss. So we had another meeting, and they all came up and voted on Habitat. They did due diligence, they came in, they gave a presentation, as the other builders did. Then Habitat came out again and met with community leaders in the Elkenburg area, and they had a meeting sitting right here. I don't know what more they can do. Now they're going to have another meeting and come out. They have tried and tried to be transparent. They have local people in Grand Rapids that does design work, that is willing to come down, has offered many times, and has come down. They had another person from the Habitat group drive here and walk all around the community and go in at different homes and knock on doors and said, is there anything you want to tell us? They have tried. Now, it may not be enough, but they surely have tried to be transparent.
I'd request for a five-minute recess.
Please.
We're good with that?
Am I making my own motion, or?
You just do it.
I'll make a motion, we take a five-minute recess.
Second.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, let's take five.
I need a cup of coffee.
Motion second to go back into session, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right. Anybody that has not had a chance to speak with questions, comments?
Mary Peaton-Pole, 125 Elkenberg. I was at all of those meetings that the city held. I don't have the same perception you have, no one ever asked me or anyone on our committee, on our particular condo, to be on a committee. They asked Chris Valentine to be on the Habitat, she actually voted for Habitat as the best of the three. It wasn't a welcoming of the whole project as it was presented, we thought it was horrible. Originally, I was at the.
You're saying they voted, but it's horrible? The person from your condo is voting yes unanimously, and now you're saying it's horrible?
She voted, sir, it's my turn.
Joe, let her speak.
Okay, she voted for Habitat as the best of the three, okay? We did not like the plan that was presented at the time. We actually liked what was first presented, middle-income, missing-middle housing that would fit in with the neighborhood. Now when you went with your high-density projects, we were not. Not one of us in the condo was asked to be on any committee. I'm not sure where that committee was, a private committee maybe, but not one of us was asked. But I was at all the public meetings, and there was never any discussion about a high-density condo. And I just resent you saying that because we were, we've been more than willing to be with anyone. I've even emailed you, and you said, you know, you really didn't respond to any beady where Mr. Arnold did, Mr. Smith did, and we appreciate that very much, and we appreciate your answers to us very much. And so, we're trying, we don't appreciate what's going on, and we're trying to give our opinion, and we're not getting answers. So we're upset with what's going on because what you originally agreed to or were presenting, and what you're presenting now is very different, and we loved what you presented at first. We are all for growth. I was a teacher, I would have loved to be in a position to have a nice home, but I certainly don't want a 500-square-foot apartment to live in when I raised my three kids. That's not exactly what I consider a nice home. So I would like you to work with us, and we're long-time residents, I've lived here this year, this time I've lived here for 18 years, before I lived here for 10. And I have a vested interest in South Haven, it's a lovely place, and I'd like to keep it lovely. Thank you.
So there's a workshop to come. We've fended off a lot of questions, I know about this, so I guess if there are still questions that have not been answered, you've got all of our email, I mean, maybe just go, I mean, let me give them your card, because maybe if you're, if somebody sent one to G Council and we didn't get it, then that makes me concerned, but maybe just get the card from Kate and go directly through her and she'll get it to us. Sound good?
Yes, we can do that.
Thank you. All right, anybody else, and if not, City Manager comments?
Well, thank you, Mayor. Yeah, so just to restate, so we are planning to bring the conceptual plan that was presented at the community meeting, not sure if there's been any tweaks since then, but have the Habitat Company, and this is not to be confused with the Habitat for Humanity, they're very different. The Habitat Company is the preferred developer that came out of the Overton Evaluation Committee. And just to kind of restate, the Overton Evaluation Committee was not, was only tasked with choosing of the three developers that was presented, which of them should be the preferred developer to work with the city. The committee was unanimous in saying that the Habitat was the best of the three, that's how we got to where we are today with the Habitat Company. Habitat Company has been reaching out with multiple stakeholders, has come up with a conceptual plan that they think meets the City Council's adopted priorities, and in what they've heard from City Council over the many meetings that have been had, and of course, your stated thoughts as well as the RFP. And so the council should be receiving that plan at a workshop Monday, June 21st at 5:30 PM, it'll be a workshop here in this room. We'll have the Habitat Company, I'm sorry, Habitat Team here to present for council, answer any questions that council may have. There may be a limited time for public comment, excuse me, public comment, and we may be having a portion on the, on the City Council's regular agenda to ask the council to take some action if this is the plan or this meets the council's objectives. So just plan on, so two weeks from now, we'll be here in this room at 5:30. Going forward, I do want to thank everyone's patience, while we do work with our Limited Park staff, as I mentioned before, typically we have 10 people. Right now, we're down, we've only hired about three, we're looking to add about two more, but that's if people are showing up and can pass their drug screening. Because of that, we are having some challenges with getting trash removal, please be patient with us, we are working on that, we are allocating resources as we need with the street department to get those addressed. But with now, with the maintenance contract approved tonight with council, we should get our load lightened a little bit to address more of our pressing concerns with the trash removal. I'm not sure if the council knew, but a former City Council member, Bill Bradley, passed on Friday, June 4th, I just want to put that in your ear. His obituary is on Philibrance's obituary wall, so just kind of put that in your, in your thoughts and prayers, his family. I do want to thank Bill for all of his help with the outage, yes, it was, it was uncomfortable several hours, it was more than we anticipated when we heard the initial outcome of, you know, restoration 11:30, and then 4 AM, it was not ideal. So we are thinking about our businesses that are really struggling right now, but we are also looking at what we can do better to get our communication, get our communication out to our businesses, but also just thinking what can we do better about making sure that we have a reliable system here. And the last thing, we did put in federal appropriations, we were notified, notified by Senator Stabenow's office that they are bringing back earmarks, and she notified us as, because of our work last year with our high water challenges, and we put in an application for beach nourishment, and we'll see if that will have any fruit.
Good.
Excellent. Thank you. And those are my comments.
Thank you. Any questions for Kate? Nothing, appreciate it. City Council comments, to my left, Mr. Sloane. We're still here, sorry.
No comments.
All right.
Thanks.
It's, I don't know how to say, Serge Buocassini? Buocassini, sorry, sorry for the mispronunciation. Yeah, please send your questions again, I didn't get it, and it sounds like we didn't get it, so please.
I have something to the City Manager.
That, that'll work.
Yep, that'll work.
Be sure, send them again, please. Yep, that, okay, appreciate it. It sounds like that maybe that all didn't work, if you, City Council all maybe didn't.
I thought we weren't hearing any issues with that, but we will check with IT, and if they want to send them directly to myself, then I can also forward them to all City Council members as well. So my email, okay, all right.
Normally, anything comes to Kate, we always get that.
Right.
That's a safe, the safest venue.
Okay.
But so then my other comment, I'm sorry.
I apologize for the emotion.
We don't normally take questions, oh, yeah, that's fine, it's, you're passionate about your home, we understand. My other comment was about the vote about the fireworks. I really had some heartburn about it, I really share Steve's fears, but I felt like in the past, when we've taken risks with events like this, I don't want to say take a risk. Monica made a great point, I have some naughty neighbors that fire off those kinds of things all the time without asking permission, so at least she was going through the proper channels. But I do share Steve's concerns about the potential liability, but my thought was, let's give her a chance, and then I know that Kate and the city staff will follow up to make sure that hopefully Steve's concerns are not recognized, and then, and I'm also worried about the precedent setting, but if, you know, if it goes badly, we can say no, and if it turns out there is some legal things, then we'll say no. And so hopefully we're not establishing a precedent for this kind of thing, but like I say, I got a naughty neighbor that does it all the time, so it's happening already, and Monica made that point. But so those are my comments.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Cap?
Sorry, Jeff, I didn't mean to fire off the fireworks all the time, but, I'm with Jeff on the fireworks. I was kind of torn, but I kind of wanted to see how this went. As far as the EVs, charging stations, I'm pretty excited for that. My wife just got a Tesla, or ordered a Tesla or something, I don't know what, we'll find out. Hopefully it keeps running and we get all the parts, we'll find out. But as for the city, I know Ford's got an electric truck coming out, that's kind of cool, that's all EV, so. Just a little bit information, so, that's it.
George?
I also want to send a shout-out, thanks to Brian DeSette as the City Manager when I first came on City Council. I learned a lot from Brian, and I really do appreciate his service to the city. I also want to thank all those that work, that are citizens in the city that try to make the city better. Monique Crowley, she put in a lot of effort trying to pull off this, this event, followed the process, and I much appreciate that. Linda Hogan, who's, who's trying to put a little book station near her house, another example of a citizen, you know, trying to make the city a little bit better. And we didn't have a lot of discussion on the budget, that's thanks to all the hard work that the staff put into preparing the budget, and we went through a budget workshop where we talked about the budget, so it's nice when, when some things go smoothly, and that's thanks to the good staff that we have. That's it.
Well-stated, thank you. Mr. Reese?
The only comments, first, I'm very grateful that so many tourists and residents were enjoying the beaches this weekend. I can't remember seeing so many people this early in the season, so it's nice to see. I know Letitia couldn't make it tonight, she really wanted to, but her son is a local high school graduate. He went to Hope College, got an electrical engineering degree, just graduated with honors. He's a musician, he's an athlete. I've never met a young man with more integrity than her son, and today he moves into his own apartment, and he has a very high-paying starting salary for an engineering job over in Lansing. So my congratulations to her, and it's nice to see a local person do so well. Thanks.
Well-stated. I will also just jump in, we had high school graduation yesterday for our class of 2021, a beautiful ceremony. My two graduated, held it together, so, but just to our grads, to all of them, we say congratulations, you know, good luck, we hope you continue to think of this as home and come back and live, reside, visit, whatever it might be, so we're proud of all of you. Just, and again, to Georgia's, you know, just echo, this is crazy, like in a gerbil cage up here. Just, you know, thanks to all the citizens for their ideas, for their input. Again, the, like, the fireworks, it's wasn't a, I think we all love the concept, the idea, some concerns, and we should have concerns, so, in the end, they'll go on, just make sure we get a fire truck over there to make sure nothing goes wrong, and maybe we can get it into the park in the future years. Related to our safety, folks, this is, these codes are super cool, and I love that we're doing more things to increase awareness relative to beach safety. So I think we're doing a lot as a city to ensure safety, whether it be the splash pad, whether it be just, you know, safety resources, so good things going on in the city, thanks to city staff, everybody for keeping us safe and doing a great job. So let's go home. Let's take a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion second to adjourn, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned, good night.